Alright, I'm gonna start if we're good. You good Joe?
Yep.
Roll call please. Tracy Bonkowski.
Here.
Lucy Noel Dobber.
Here.
Here, Diddy. Here. Craig.
Here.
Steve Attell.
Here.
Richard Woodson. Here. And...
John.
John.
Cole Cosse.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, C.
Okay, public hearings we have none tonight. Approval of the agenda.
So.
Second? Second? All in favor? How can I help you carry? Public comments on agenda items. No public. Approval of the minutes dated September 3rd, 2019. Did everybody get a chance to look at those today? I'm sorry, I didn't realize it didn't go up to everyone in September last night.
Yeah, you did.
Did you?
Yeah, she did. Early, they came up.
Yeah.
You did get them early.
Yeah, I was going on vacation on...
I wasn't sure if they went all the way across. But, did everybody get a chance to look at them? Get a last one or this one? Okay, I know we had one change.
I just wanna add, let's see, under Matters of Consideration, New Business, the motion. It says to approve site plan with recommended addition of windows and doors pending planning approval.
I was about to ask that. I was just about to ask that.
I think we should change it to Planner.
Planner, okay.
Just because I don't want somebody to come and then they're, we gotta redirect.
What was the...
The motion was, yeah, yes, we approved, you had to add doors and windows, move forward. And I said, it would be nice if you copied us, once the drawings are, we'd like to see it.
Where were the doors and windows? At the end of the building, as I work?
Yes.
Okay, it's just been a little while, trying to refresh.
Yes, they were just gonna put a side entrance, right?
Yes.
He was gonna put a side entrance.
That's right, 'cause one of them is gonna be a restaurant, we wanna have windows so people can see it off of the back.
That's all I have. Okay, so with the changes, we need a motion to approve the minutes dated September 3rd, 2019. And let there's other changes. Okay, so Steve's made a motion.
Yeah, I made a motion to approve.
Support. Tracy supports, all in favor? I, I. Motion carried. Communications correspondence and workshop. I'll start with, I did just send out a couple of emails tonight or our reports this evening. One is from John, which was just some background information on master plans that for you to review before the December meeting. Did you, you just got it this last hour? But you don't need it for tonight, it's for December. Okay. And then the other one that I sent out was, Smerad.
I got engineering review.
The engineering planning reviews for Coyote. That's also not something you need for tonight, but if you wanna go through that before December's meeting, or whenever he comes back, but he's currently not set to come back just right now. Did anyone else have any communication or correspondence or anything you'd like to share? So Matters of Consideration, Old Business and Master Plans. So we'll start with that.
Thank you, everybody. So, as Mr. Rodzik just said, I said, would you like me to call you that?
Call him.
Okay. I'm chair.
No, Jeff's fine.
So, she just sent out an email that I sent out earlier this evening, or this afternoon. It contains the future land use chapters from the previous master plan. I broke it up into sections, like focus sections within that future land use chapter. So it's a section of transportation, commercial, industrial, residential, community facilities, that are all within the future land use chapter of the master plan. I figured each, it'd be good for us to start looking at some of these things. It's a little bit ahead of schedule of what we're supposed to look at in this, but if you start looking through it, there's goals and objectives within each section. There's narratives that are painted for each section. There's maps that we have that kinda designate where those commercial areas are, where the residential areas are. It might be good for us to just start looking through these things, see if what we had five years ago jives with what we're looking at today and what we want for the future. It's a big discussion, it's probably one of the most important discussions in the master plan. I'm watching. So I figured maybe it could just start getting ahead of that, and we start thinking about it. And feel free to mark up the pages that I sent you guys. Come ready with comments and suggestions. And as we get through this, we can start addressing those things. Whether it's for the December meeting, or if you wanna wait till next year as we get closer to that future land use portion of the master plan process, we can definitely get that, but I just figured it might be good to get ahead of the game with that one. So you'll get all that information there, I think it's like four, five, six PDFs, where they're all about like two, three pages long. And then there's the actual overall future land use map, that's part of that too, that shows the entire picture that we're looking at, trying to achieve. And to see if that's still the vision that we want for the village going forward. So, with that said, I figured this might be many people's first master plan or master plan process. I might just give you the quick rundown in terms of why we do this thing, what its purposes, and what we're, could be expected to do going forward. So, the master plan process is something that we usually undertake every five years or so. Some communities do it every ten, but the best practice is to do it every five years. At that moment, it is something that is required by the state of Michigan under like planning enabling the legislation. There aren't any formal guidelines in terms of like what needs to be inside of the documents, but there's like generally accepted practices for what a good master plan looks like. And that's what we follow, or those guidelines that are kind of applied throughout the entire country. So, every five years, what we try to do is we try to look at the existing conditions, looking at like the current demographics, previous demographics, what future trends might be for the demographics, housing trends, housing needs, affordable housing, or otherwise if we need different utility services and development there. Transportation needs, whether it's natural motorized transportation, like trails, sidewalks, if we need road improvements or expansions or road diets, different types of visions for those type of things. Economic trends, so we're looking at what type of businesses are located here, what type of businesses we're trying to attract. These are all aspects that are part of the master plan. So after we analyze all these different trends and analysis, which we do as like a collective body, like chapter by chapter, we then take that and then we engage the public. That's when we have our public workshop. To then talk about, from this information, what is your vision? What do you guys see as a need? What is your experience in the community? And we take their input and their feedback, and then we start shaping the future land use plan, as well as the goals and objectives for going forward with the master plan. So once we paint that map and set those goals and objectives, we then create an implementation plan, a zoning plan, that shows how we're going to achieve these changes. And part of that too is when we're going through this process, we look at what we had, the implementation plan in the past, we see what we've already achieved. We check those boxes off, we give an update in terms of what status are we at for a capital improvements plan or something like that. We say whether it's in progress, or we haven't even started it, or has it been fully implemented? Are we refreshing these documents? Zoning orders, updates, all these different things, parks and recreation plans. We can have all this different stuff that's part of the implementation plan that we've outlined, that master plan. So, once we have this all created, the idea for the master plan is for that to be a guiding document for decision makers. For the village council, for planning commission, whether it's a rezoning request, or a lot split, or a conditional rezoning, or new development that's coming in. We use that document, we reference that document to make sure that if we approve this, this is in line with what the vision is. And this isn't something that we're just kinda making decisions haphazardly, because we're just making our best guess at this. There's a tried and true way of how to make these decisions, and this is gonna be our guiding document. The same thing goes for ordinances, everything else. Like that master plan becomes our guiding document to how we shape these ordinances, because we wanna make sure that the order that we write helps achieve the vision that was set for in the master plan. So, that's the ultimate, kinda like quick summary of master plans. If you guys have any questions regarding that, I can, I would be more than happy to answer them. Beyond that, the current status of the master plan. We went into these schedules last time we had the meeting, in terms of what we were trying, how we're trying to achieve our different milestones throughout the process and looking at, hopefully happens wrapped up by July-ish next year. If things go well, maybe a little sooner. But we'll see how this goes, currently the track is for July. But we currently have the introduction, pretty much that, I mean that's, because this master plan process, that's the other thing too is, every five years you don't necessarily do a complete rewrite. You do an update, and then maybe after ten years you do a complete rewrite, as things have maybe changed a little more after a decade versus five years. But, so this version right now that we're doing is more of an update than a rewrite, because we just did a complete rewrite about five years ago. So, with that, the introduction has not changed. It's pretty much the same, things apply today as it did five years ago for the introduction of the chapters. Existing conditions, I believe we went through that in February last year, or Jeff. I actually did the existing conditions and demographic analysis then, he presented that here. We can go over that again if you'd like, and I can provide you with that, with that chapter, that would be a problem. I can show you the new graphics, everything else, and the new information there, just a refresher memory there. But that section should be pretty much well aware in terms of what the statistics are and what the current trends are. It's pretty much just information that's gathered from the census, and then we just apply it, and then do fancy charts and graphs with it. And then the environmental inventory is another section that really hasn't changed. Like, the drains are the drains, the rivers are rivers, the trees are the trees. Nothing dramatic has really changed in the environmental aspect of the village behavior in the last five years. So that section's pretty much where it needs to be. What we still have to do is we have to do existing land use, future land use, as I also said, the implementation plan and the zoning plan. I gave you the future land use information, that's something we can look at. We're gonna do the existing land use analysis internally, because it's pretty much just looking at aerial image, and determining what type of, what the land is being used for, and creating a map from that. I will give you that chapter with the new edits and everything else and the information. As soon as we get that done, that should be within the next month, month and a half. It shouldn't take too long to do that. And then we'll go along from there, into the future land use section, which is the big meat and potatoes of everything. We have a public workshop in May, in terms of what we're headed towards. If we decide that we can do that sooner, we can do it sooner. It's a flexible schedule, so if we're ahead of schedule, we can adjust accordingly. In the meantime, we do need to set up some meetings with the village departments, DPW and everybody else, as well as some of the key landowners in the community. Those the foundry site, or other sites within the community, just to see what their plans are for the land, as well as what maybe the environmental conditions of some of these sites that may be brownfields, to see if they do have documentation on that, so that we can at least try to get that stuff so we know what's in our community in terms of land conditions. So those meetings should be settled, or set up within the next month or two. And then we will keep you abreast of what comes out of those, and some of those we can share out with you as well. So that's a quick synopsis of everything with the master plan. Do you guys have any questions?
I didn't.
Yep.
But I kinda reviewed the master plan, and, you know, we didn't really achieve many things on it. I would say, I was just skipping to review it, and I think there was really only like two things in it that have really been completed, or folk worked on or discussed. So I know you said we can't redo it, but can we eliminate things out of it when we're doing the rewrite?
Yeah, so basically what I say, like, there's an update. It doesn't mean that we can't necessarily mix things and re-update an entire chapter. And more so, it just means that we don't need to break it down completely from the ground up, and do a whole new document, new format, new pictures, do everything else. It's a lot bigger undertaking graphically, or anything else, maybe do something like that. If we want to completely update the future land use plan, we can do that. We might completely update the implementation plan or the action plan, and maybe change our goals, and change our objectives, and change what we're trying to achieve, that's completely within our arms. So we can do any of those things. So in that sense, it's a complete write-up, rewrite for those type of things. But that's not that big of a deal, we can definitely do those things.
It's just my opinion is, is I would rather see us have obtainable goals and need them. And then, okay, we've had some successes, let's, what can we do next? Where this looks more like a wish list to me, and it probably was at the time, it was new, a lot of different people, and I think I was involved, but not real deep at this level, more just on a community level, but...
And that's really, with the master plan, give a bounce. So while you do update it every five years, there are a mixture of short-term, mid-term, long-term goals. Mostly the short- and long-term goals. So you can have your attainable short-term stuff, but you can also have your long-term, like guiding vision type stuff. So things you aspire to achieve, but may not be realistic for the next five years. So you can have those twenty-year goals in there if you want to, you just wanna identify them as long-term goals, so that way when it comes to the five-year rewrite or update, don't feel like you've never achieved anything. So that's one thing that delineations probably important to make. And it's also a different way of thinking about those things too. So it's like, what do we need to get done now, or what's achievable, and what's something that we need to kind of embrace, it's like those guiding principles, that's those longer goals, so...
And also my purpose in bringing that up is, is we ask our stakeholders to come and participate in this process. We've done that already, but we didn't do any of those things that they requested or asked to be done. You know, we created this great document. So if I was a stakeholder, I would be, I'm not sure if I'm gonna participate again, because I already went, I gave them a lot of time and effort and energy, and nothing came out, so...
And that's the hard part too, it's just like, like anything else, there's always like a building's gossip, and cynicism that comes with these processes. And we're like, okay, we received a very good plan, but in reality, it's just a shell of reflect dust and whatever else. And in the end, it comes down to, you really needed to, to help kinda take those things, and you really need to have a lot of energy and kind of charge forth through it. The reality of the thing is, like, that's kinda how it is in those master plans. And it's just trying to, when you do achieve a couple of your things, you need to really champion those things. You need to make sure that those things are known, and have been sold, and maybe there's like this big thing. It is a big thing, it's hard to get governors to do anything. So when you do achieve those things, you need to make sure that it's a big thing. Because either there's only one or two or twenty, maybe there's still, something that got better, you know?
Right. And on a positive note, I mean, this committee did a lot of work, and some of the tasks that were asked to be done, and that was our ordinances. So that is something that we'll be able to check off, yeah, we have to do that, so...
And that's the hard part too, when it comes to ordinances and stuff like that. Like, it's always easy on the schedule of, yeah, we'll get this done in two months. But you don't realize what type of curveballs get thrown at you. Or the legal staff moves, or the constitution that just kinda comes up, and it's all about signorances, and this has everything to do with freedom of speech, and the First Amendment, and how much more complicated it gets.
Yeah.
So that's who, when the process becomes a year, and that slows down everything else, so, yeah.
I wonder, when you're saying some of the goals for, maybe some of the goals and objectives that were in here were wish list based on other factors that would have, that they were hoping that would have been met? Maybe, I mean, maybe the land, or...
Possibly.
The road conditions, or, you know what I'm saying?
Right. I think revisiting it now, after it was, you know, when it was put in place, you're like, oh yeah, this is awesome. And now go four or five years, and you look at it, you're like, oh, thinking.
Right.
Like, these were some impossible tasks, actually, so, you know, they're out of reach. So, yes, I am...
Some of them maybe could be reeled in now, you know?
Yes. I just would like to see obtainable goals, that's all.
There's a lot of them, right? I didn't really...
Yeah, I think one example would be like the situation of the residential section, or the downtown section, I believe.
That's the one I was looking at.
Yeah, so they were talking about four base codes, and there's a whole bunch of stuff there. During the time that that plan was created, that was the, the beyond of like new codes, and then this, this thing is supposed to achieve these great things, and thus what, this would be a lot of memory have, it's like, what a model things we see throughout the country. And implementation has been a lot more difficult. It's been something that's been difficult for communities to really put into their ordinances, and make sure you teach your city officials to learn how to apply it, and everything else, it's very difficult. And a lot of those four base codes, you need some great market pressures to be able to influence the people build on the property like that. So, that was one section I was gonna say we may wanna look at, and say, instead of a four base code, maybe do some sort of like hybrid, or something like that, where you start, where you have pieces of the four base code into your normal ordinance, but you don't have to do a full four base, which is a little bit more behind this guy. So, it's stuff like that, where if you could point those little things out, those could be subtle changes that we can make that makes those goals a little more attainable, realistic for, for the village, any community, really in the Cole County. It was a four base code, I can imagine would really work in any community in the county. Other than having like a hybrid form, which is what we've done in Unica, what Stone High since I was certain little areas, go city of Rochester, and also in county, but Rochester's trying to do that, but they have different problems, and it's different development pressures, but, yeah. Any questions?
Anybody else? Craig Lucy? Good? Okay, did you wanna add anything else worth in the master plan, or we'll, this next month, we will dive into the stuff that...
Do we wanna like tackle it one, one feature at a time, or, I mean, we're not gonna do the all, all this, but we wanna focus on like tool and future land use and the community facilities, or just focus on...
How did you wanna do that? We kinda discussed it on the phone a little bit.
I guess the first thing, I, it depends on how you wanna do the approach. Do you wanna break them into small bites, or do you wanna first look at the full vision of the map, and see like, okay, like, is this realistic for, I would probably say, maybe start with downtown first, and then I'd probably build up from there. Because a lot of residential stuff, probably not, probably not, it's gonna change too much there. The industrial, something that, that might have a little bit of change to it. Somebody community facilities, you may wanna look at that section a little bit. But I say commercial downtown, and the industrial sections are probably the ones that have the most, most change. So it really depends on what your approach will also be.
Well, do you wanna, how about, you sent us six.
Yep.
Do you wanna maybe pick two that we focus on for next? Is too fair for everybody, like, I know it's a busy month and everything, and you have...
I think to be fair, I, just by looking at these goals and objectives for the future land use downtown, there's a lot there.
I mean, we can stick with the guidelines and what the...
Some of them, you're right, because, you know, some of the other ones might not be as involved, and might be able to do two. But I think we would, we would spend a lot of time on...
The downtown?
Yeah, just, there's, there's four goals here that we probably have to discuss.
Okay, we could just, is everybody good with just doing downtown then, next month? Are you good with just downtown? Is that enough to keep us on schedule, or...
I think so. I mean, like, like he was saying, it's one of those things where like, that might be a more bold section. Maybe we'll pick like the base on the other ones, so...
Yeah, because you know, like residential, you might, you might be able to do two on residential, commercial. I just see downtown being the big one, because that's pretty much what we seem to discuss a lot when it comes to businesses and buildings and things, so...
Okay, now, I do have a question I wanna ask about this. How do you feel about like doing a workshop, which is a little bit more informal for conversation prior to an actual meeting?
I'd probably prefer that, if that's something that you guys would like to do. We can even, yeah, something like that, where we completely find it around table or otherwise, and we can sit down and talk about the section, and come back with a report of what we did during the workshop.
And how much time do you think would be necessary for a workshop for the downtown?
If we're all fairly organized, and we have, we did like, did the whole beforehand. I have done usually workshops within an hour, like forty-five minutes.
Do you wanna, anybody set up a workshop then for prior to our next meeting? So six o'clock on the December, is that one for you, I guess we should ask?
Yeah.
December 3rd?
You're out of time?
But that's fine, you can move forward. What I'll do is I'll just spend you, I'll take up something.
Your feedback?
Yep. Actually, we did something on this list, we can check off.
Okay.
So that's exciting, right?
On downtown?
On the downtown.
We did.
Objective one, goal one, one point one.
It was bike racks.
Develop a formal parking rack.
That's a joke. Wait, it was December 3rd you're gonna do today?
Are you good with December 3rd?
No. Okay, well, we don't, I mean, there's nothing that says we have to do it prior to our meeting. We could, I can try.
We could do it just on another, just another day.
Wouldn't you be at the December meeting though? Are you gonna be at the December meeting, or...
The December meeting here?
Yes. You just can't come early.
Can't come early.
You just can't come early?
We could play, the December 3rd is our meeting? I was thinking it was December 4th.
Oh.
No? It could be, it's not...
It's alright, yes, I'll be there, fine, okay. So... If something changes, like, we don't go on...
Well then, we'll do that, we'll schedule the workshop for December 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Who's bringing dinner?
And then we'll tackle everything during the meeting. Okay. Anything else on that? Anybody? So, new business, we have none. Planner report, we had a couple of things. I don't know what all you wanted to discuss there. Haytham update?
So, Haytham submitted his updates to the site plan. He achieved the conditions that was set forth for when we approved his site plan. So he added the windows and the sides. He also added the entry point that we're looking for in the restaurant, tenant space. The site plan was compliant. I know now, as going through the engineering review, I believe you saw some of his report. And you can review that some. It's a lot of little technical things, misinformation in the site plan, changes in rate curb radiuses that he wanted from the engineering side of things. But in terms of the planning perspective, we didn't have the objections to what he submitted. They satisfied all the conditions there. So that was good. And then, we also had a meeting, all you can do this too. This right here is from McDonald's. They are looking at doing a facade improvement of their building. They're gonna do it, yeah, McDonald's, 26.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, McDonald's. So they're doing the facade improvements, and they're also repaving their parking lot. Maintain the same footprints, without changing the building at all, for what they told me, we'll confirm that. But if that is the case, it can be done administratively, don't have to go planning commission. If he decides to expand anything, add any drives, do anything that's beyond the scope of what the administrative review is, then I'll make sure that triggers the planning commissioner review at that point. So just give you an idea of what's going on there. We also had a meeting with JMA Manufacturing, which was the old seed planter, beginning of the school building over there.
I'm Grasset, from everybody. Are you familiar, Craig?
No.
The kind of brassy-looking metal building across from the decor entrance, kind of?
Kind of, almost like a...
It's a little skinny.
There's always a camper.
More like a medicine center.
There's always a camper out. They live in there, camper. Well then, carry on.
So, they are, they approached the village and then planning staff with the idea of wanting to put in addition to their site. Specifically like a pole barn type structure, accessory type structure, to house outdoor storage, and to house whatever machinery or equipment that they currently have stored outdoors. Now, when they came to us, we told them that this would then trigger a full site plan review, because beyond the fact that it's an expansion, and you would need to do a full site plan review anyways, the site is actually conditionally... Because beyond the fact that it's an expansion and you would need to do a full site review anyways, the site is actually conditionally rezoned. So that means that it was, it's actually zone general business, the property. But the village entered into a contract basically with the landowners to rezone the property as long as you got these conditions. And one of them was, if you do any type of expansion, it has to go to site plan. So that is the situation that they're at right now, is this. So when you go to site plan, it triggers basically all the new ordinances. So they have to meet all the landscape standards. They have to meet, they took the screening standards, if they do any type of expansion in pavements, they need to have the water attention to small water. Standards that they have for engineering. So it's like this whole process that really does cost a bit of money for any type of redevelopment. So what they're basically approaching us with is, they were hoping that by, and this is something that we talked internally with Sir Mad and us. Because Sir Mad didn't have an issue with looking at the site plan per se. And looking at the pole barn and not necessarily applying all the landscaping standards and everything else. As long as new pavement wasn't put on the site and that more impermeable surfaces weren't created. If that makes sense, if you're following that. And basically saying that they don't need to necessarily abide by all the same, all the standards that are going to be applied at that point. If they just don't expand the impermeable surface. That's something that will also come to planning commission at that point too. Because that is up to us as planning commission. If we go with the same engineering decision on this, to say that we're not necessarily going to apply all the landscaping standards. All the new parking standards and regulations and everything else, just because it's a minimal expansion type of thing. Now, that's completely within, with your purview. You guys have the power in the situation in terms of deciding whether or not you want to kind of waive that requirement. And give a little bit of interpretation there in terms of how you're doing the site plan reviews, that planning reprocess. If you decide not to do it, that's what we're right as well. Because like anything else, at some point, you do need to kind of decide where that line is drawn in terms of when you want to apply the ordinance and try to affect change.
Wouldn't a floor of a pole barn be permanent? Like, wouldn't they have to pour a new floor to put the pole barn on? Use some pad for it?
And an apron?
So technically, because, yes, they would have to do a foundation and everything for that too. Even if it wasn't like a permanent structure and they had bolted, it'd be on top of impermeable surface. What the argument was is that there's currently concrete there. So they wouldn't necessarily expand it. It'd be within the same footprint of what it is.
Okay.
So that's what their argument was. The ordinances really have, I've seen other ordinances in the past where it's like, if a building expands no more than 25% of its square footage, then that won't trigger a full site plan. We don't have that provision. But even so, like the square footage that I think he's trying to do is something like 1,000 square feet or so, I think it's around like a 20%. Or, yeah, 1,000 square foot, if he's going to square feet, so 20% expansion or so. But either way, that's something that you guys need to consider in terms of what you want to do. If you want to apply the standards or if you want to waive, waive that for them. Just a note, and we talked about this in the past. Outdoor storage is something that they currently have. They have a boat, an RV and whatever else is out there. That's something that was never included in the original site plan. And that was something that they currently have. And that's something that's back and forth. So that's also something to kind of think about as well, so.
I'm wondering what they're wanting to store.
A boat and an RV.
In the barn?
Yeah. It says you have to, you know, you have to be prepared that you're going to set a precedence for future. It's kind of rough looking already.
Kind of? So they probably want to build it at the end right here, like, where the bone is now, just to extend?
That was the original plan. And when they came to us with that plan, we told them that by putting it in that location, they would be violating the setbacks, the side air setbacks there. As well as they took the landscape standard there. So that was a no-go. They would have to actually place it at the front side of the building. Same end, at North End, but on the front side. I guess they have like a bay, or something there, yeah, something there. They have to put it in front of that structure there in order to apply the side air setbacks as well as save within the building. The billable area for that parcel. Otherwise, the only place to truly do it properly would have to be at the rear of the site. At which point, you need new concrete and you'd have to have a drive back there. And at that point as well, they'd actually have to move their front yard parking to the rear of the site and put landscape screen on the entire perimeter of the site to be applied. Because they are a bloody residential property right there, so. There's quite a few issues. Though they have all solar stuff that you'd have to figure out with Sir Mad's master plan, so if they do decide to do that.
Will they be here at the next meeting or is?
We told them to put together a concept of what they're looking at doing. Have a very clear, specific task that they're trying to ask us to do, and then present their idea. Before they actually do an application, pay for an application and go through the whole process and waste their money and this time and everything else. So they, I don't know if they're coming next meeting or when they are, put this up together. They need January, they got, because they're kind of laying out their options in terms of what cost is going to be. But it makes sense to put in an application for that, because you're blocking the bay. That goes to their, so.
That boat's been there for a while anyways, and whatever. So if he ever comes and everyone says, no, still the boat there? I don't want, no, it's a property that I, I don't want, I don't want it there.
Well, it would probably fall under co-conformment at that point. And that's, I mean, let's be honest, that stuff continues to sit on that property, it's our fault. Because we had it enforced, it is not enforced, so.
I wasn't sure if, I'm a real plastic company, I work for one, so I know how much stuff collects. So I was wondering if they're talking about storing unused hoppers and everything else, because I don't look at.
I think the initial discussion was that we were supposed to store our skips and whatever else. But I believe the initial intent was for our meeting, so.
You said thousands, correct?
How that, are we on speed?
But maybe they just need to add a little bit add and maybe they need some light.
Yeah.
I remember she was talking like 30 by 48 type structure. And it'd be a tight fit, probably, but.
Okay, did you have anything else to with that?
Yeah, that's the thing, that's why I got a vote.
Power comments? All right?
I'm good.
Call from the table? Anyone? When's the tree light? That's the Friday after, is that Saturday after Thanksgiving?
30, yeah.
And then the community dinner is the Friday before Thanksgiving. What is the 30th? The tree light.
So Friday the 22nd?
Yes. Anything else, anyone? Okay, welcome to a germ. Okay, I'll pay for it.
Hi.
We need to adjourned at 7:40.